Today is Tuesday, July the 6th. The time is 8:35. The Board is in session to conduct its open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us are a room full of happy people. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Yeah, we're gonna start this morning's meeting off with an administration of the oath of office to our newly appointed Sheriff, Matthew Clifford. Matthew, if you could come forward. Come around here. Congratulations. You can raise your hand and take the oath. I'm gonna give you the oath. I'll read it to you and read it back to you. "I, Matthew Clifford..."
"I, Matthew Clifford..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"That I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"And the Constitution of the State of Idaho..."
"And the Constitution of the State of Idaho..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And that I will faithfully discharge the duties..."
"Of Ada County Sheriff..."
"Of Ada County Sheriff..."
"...according to the best of my ability..."
"According to the best of my ability..."
"So help me God..."
"So help me God."
I present to you Sheriff Clifford.
You can announce we have boring OBM.
We have a bunch of business to conduct today. You're welcome to hang around if you want.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk. Are we ready to go? Okay, we're going to, uh, we have several unfinished, uh, business items from procurement this morning. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Test, 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 test.
Testing? Okay, they're on. Yes, I made the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, first up, we'll have Mr. Perkins here. Let's begin the final ranking and award recommendations for RFP 21031.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP 21031 has completed evaluations and the interviews for two candidates, and would like to submit...
I'll be right back, pick up the pipe, folks. You betcha, I'll pay you five bucks for your letter.
If you could read it in the record, we appreciate it.
It's a letter dated July 6th, 2021, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP 21031. Dear Members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP 21031. The final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation score. The final rankings in order of evaluation score are as follows. Number one, Radix Construction Incorporated with a score of 136.58. Number two, HC Company Incorporated with a score of 118.78. Number three, Cambridge Companies Incorporated with a score of 73.36. And number four, IRZ Consulting LLC with a score of 68.08. This is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP 21031 to Radix Construction Inc. as the number one ranked proposer.
Radix Construction?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion if we're ready.
Just a question, now, this is design build, isn't it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you are correct, this is a design build project.
And what's the, what's the estimated, uh, cost?
Uh, the estimated cost was, uh, the estimated budget was approximately $1.8 million. Uh, Radix, uh, had a rough order magnitude of cost of $2.5 million. And so there's quite a bit of programming that needs to be done yet, uh, with this project. They give us a, a number that, uh, they think it's gonna fall in a range, but we have a lot of programming yet to do. So, what, what the point of the RFP is really is to find our most qualified candidate to do the project for us.
Then you have Bruce squeeze them down?
We're gonna have them sharpen their pencils.
Chairman, Commissioner, that's part of the process. We have other programming phases, as I was alluding to, where we're really honing in the actual specifications. They were quite general for the initial, uh, design build proposal. Uh, but we will start narrowing that down and seeing what... However, uh, this estimate was done a year ago, uh, and you know what's happened. It's gonna be a costly reconstruction, so, uh...
Okay.
...a little bit of increase, uh, we're doing quite well, uh, when you compare it to how much, uh, pricing is in store.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to accept the final rankings for RFP 21031, Design Build of Ada County Landfill Metal Building, 2021. Accept the evaluation committee's recommendation, um, of the award to Radix with a score of 136.58.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, uh, we have Final Rank and Award Recommendation, RFP 21058. Ada County Benefits Consultant, Broker and Advisor.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP 21058 has completed the evaluations and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay, read the letter.
It's a letter dated July 6th, uh, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners regarding, or excuse me, from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP 21058. Dear Members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP 21058, the Ada County Benefits Consultant Broker and Advisor. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, The Murray Group, score of 90.95. Number two, Payne West Insurance with a score of 78.50. Number three, Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated with a score of 75. Number four, The Partners Group with a score of 74.95. Number five, The Buckner Group with a score of 62.50. Number six, Milliman with a score of 61.80. And number seven, Mercer was non-responsive. It is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP 21058 to Murray Group as the number one ranked proposer.
Is there, uh, discussion from the Board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just looking at, um, Bethany, um, on a heads up, thumbs up. I, I know two of the names that were listed, um, usually are at the top of the list, and they weren't this time, which is a little bit surprising.
Chairman, Commissioners, we are very pleased with the proposals that we received, and we're very pleased with the, uh, firm that came on the top. It should be noted that a key member of that organization is who used to be the contact for us at Gallagher.
Okay.
And currently we've seen results of that, and so we're very pleased with the ranking.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How will they be interacting with the Board?
Would you, Beth, you wanna take that? Okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, um, in the role of those pieces, uh, they will work with the Healthcare Trust, but then also I'll be bringing them in to give you updates from their points of view. They work with a lot of books of business and can give us some best practice information, as well as, as we're facing our situation with the Healthcare Trust. What kind of key backers do we need to look at? They're really the experts on the technical side of things, so I will definitely have them in front of you, as well as they'll be in front of the trust, too.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for a request for proposal 21058, Ada County Benefits Consultant, Broker and Advisor, and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation of award.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, is there further discussion?
Uh, just one more thing, Mr. Chair. The group, are they, um, where are they located?
Chairman, Commissioners, they are local in Idaho.
Oh, they are, okay. And then do they have, um, quite a bit of experience working with other county governments?
Absolutely. Their book of business is significant in regards to the government and the whole lot, and have the self-undertrust similar to ours as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, hearing, uh, no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last, we have the award recommendation for bid 21061, Ada County Public Safety Building Front Entry Remodel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, the evaluation team for bid 21061, uh, the Ada County Public Safety Building Front Entry Remodel 2021, uh, has reviewed the bid submitted, and we'd like to submit, uh, this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. Letter dated July 6th, 2021, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 21061. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the two bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the bids for bid 21061, Ada County Public Safety Building Front Entry Remodel 2020, 21. Um, one bid was non-responsive and the other bid was over budget. Um, in accordance with Idaho Code 672805, subsection 2, subsection A, subsection Romanet 8, the Operations Department would like to request to procure this project on the open market to maintain costs within budget.
Okay. Any discussion from the Board?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Looks like, uh, you can work on that again.
Just to note, we did something similar with the, uh, Public Defenders, uh, project, and we were able to get that cost down $8,000 from the original bid. And even one of the bidders dropped their price as much as $100,000, so we're hoping to have that same success this go-around.
That's how a lot of government contracts are, aren't they? I mean, they, it depends on how, on how busy they are, as a function of how their bids go. Anyway, alright, well, well, thank you. I think moving on, uh...
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, let's have a...
I move to reject all bids for bid 21061, Ada County Public Safety Building Front Entry Remodel 2021, and procure on the open market.
I'll second that.
Is there further discussion? Um, hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, moving on, new business, Resolution 2642, Resolution for, for procuring public safety front entry remodel construction on the open market. Well, here we go again. I'm going to open, I'm going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2642. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony? Oh, Bob.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This just memorializes, uh, your decision that you just made to procure the, uh, front entry remodel on the open market, so...
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Lorna, you can say something, can you? Nope, didn't want to. Okay, uh, I'll now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the Board?
No, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Resolution 2642 as listed on the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Board will next take up, uh, Resolution Number 2643, Resolution to exempt Expo Idaho activities from the Ada County Noise Ordinance. I will now open a public hearing on Resolution 2643. Is there anyone that'd like to provide testimony? Nobody wants to provide testimony, okay? I'll now close the public hearing, is there any discussion from the Board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm assuming this meets with, uh, Bob Batista's, uh, approval? He's not here, though, but...
He's the one that had access to go back to legal and redraft to exclude them, so that's what this is.
Yeah. Uh, I'm all for it, I'm just wondering if there's gonna be any unintended consequences. Uh, did, did we have a latest hour that, uh, we expect the Expo Idaho to make noise? Past 10, past 11, past midnight? Does this include fireworks?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess we could ask, Lorna, um, during that nine-day fair period and concerts, were there any exclusions to go after the 9:00 PM noise ordinance?
Um, it, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it also includes the Hawks baseball games, because you can't predict when the innings are going to end. But going past 10 is a very rare occurrence. It's not something that happens every day or on a, a continuous basis. And, um, to address Commissioner Davidson's question regarding the fireworks, um, that's, we're looking at that as a separate issue, um, and hopefully can address that. But, um, this, as, as you're aware, you pass the noise ordinance, and there's a provision in there for exemptions. And this is to exempt when there are those rare occurrences when, um, noise goes past 10 o'clock. For example, the Western Idaho Fair.
Yeah. It goes till midnight, doesn't it?
It goes till 1:00 in the morning for those 10 days.
Basically, we're grandfathering them in.
Basically.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there further discussion from the Board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to go ahead and approve. Resolution 2643 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll have Resolution Number 2644, Resolution for the sole procurement of services to, uh, migrate Ada County's computer aided dispatch system to virtual servers. I will open the, uh, public hearing on Resolution 2644. Is there anyone here that would like to provide testimony?
Yes, um, Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Stephanie Johnson, I'm the Diamond Lake Technical Operations Manager. What we're asking for is to procure sole source services, uh, from, uh, Central Square, which was formerly Tritec. Uh, this will allow us to move our hosting of our computer dispatch and our mobile, uh... This is a service that generally is done by the vendor, because they are very familiar with their software. They write the software, they do the... Most importantly, they are familiar with the interfaces that we have. Questions, should you have any?
You have any questions from the Board?
No, Mr. Chair, it makes sense why this would need to be, um, sole source.
Anyone else like to provide testimony? I'll now close the public hearing. Um, is there discussion from the Board?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2644 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries, thank you, thank you. Oop, gotta close this off. Okay, um, we're doing licensing now. We'll now take up licensing, is there any discussion?
Oh, I see our friends, uh, Underhill Gardens are back. Were they the ones that were having the issues previously?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
They were, I think they've come before us a couple, two or three times. This one, however...
This is just...
I believe is being approved, because this is a celebration of life, and they can limit it to 50, um, people rotating, apparently. I'm sure we'll be keeping an eye on them.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to go ahead and approve this one, um, as listed on the agenda, including one catering... We'll be keeping an eye on them.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to go ahead and approve this one, um, as listed on...
We're getting an echo.
Round that day.
Alright, do we, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, on the, all the licenses, I move to approve licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, two new licenses, 22 license transfers, and three license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the Clerk's Office. Do we have, Phil McGrain's not here, he was here earlier, you got, uh, an update for us?
Mr. Chair, before we move on, Heather just jumped on. I just wanna make sure that there isn't something that we missed that she wanted to be on the record.
Clerk's Office, oh, they...
On the licenses.
Did we miss something on the licenses, Heather? He can't hear us. Oh.
Okay, back to you, she does.
Okay.
She looked like she wanted to say something, didn't she?
I think she just wanted to make sure there wasn't any questions on Underhill, and she could address the... Address the rate.
Oh.
From the Clerk's Office, Mr. Chair, we don't have really significant updates or work through budgets, um, to get those finalized, uh, for the public presentations later on. There is an agreement later on that I can address either now or at the time. Evers, that's Oracle Consultant, uh, that we talked about, where you see the Board bring them on. That's the agreement to get them started and start looking at something she's affected with. I could discuss that at the time, but that's all from the Clerk's Office.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, next up, we'll have Claims Journal. May I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Personnel Actions. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have the Assessor. We have our distinguished Assessor, Bob McQuaid. You'd like to give us an update, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, things continue to improve at Motor Vehicles, and then also, uh, this year as far as the number of appeals, we have fewer than 500. This is probably the second or third lowest number of appeals we've had probably in the last 10 years, which, uh, I, I don't understand why, but I'm not gonna question that. We're just working our way through the, uh, hearings that are coming up. We have some this morning, and, and hearings will conclude a week from today, uh, this Friday, Monday. They conclude this coming Monday.
Bob?
Well, good.
Do you think that's because the, your office is working with people behind the scenes more before they come to the Board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vincent, I think it's probably a couple of things. First of all, uh, I think people just know what's going on in the market. And, as we've said, Zillow is our best friend, people. In fact, I was just talking to someone today, a little bit earlier, uh...
That, uh, he had received his assessment notice, and he was just amazed how low it was, 'cause, because a neighbor had a, uh, how similar to his and sold it... was because, because a neighbor had a house similar to his and sold it for significantly more than the appraised value. So I think it's just, it's the real hot market, people understand it. The second thing is, I think we really got the word out, I, with the help of Elizabeth Duncan, the statesman, the press, people just really know what's, what's going on. And of course, we do try to work with the, with the people when they call and they do file an appeal, but the fact that we've had such a low number of appeals, this tells me that people are probably just, they, they just, they know what's going on with the market. That's the best I can do, sorry.
I think you're right, I think a lot of people get their assessment and don't realize or don't think about it much that their, that the assessed value is as of December 31st. And here we are in July, the markets moved significantly and they go, oh, hey, that's not bad. I think, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you.
Hard to second guess human behavior. Anyway, thank, anything else, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, that's everything from the Assessor's Office.
Okay, I thank you. Is there anyone here, oh, you're from here, from Treasurer's Office. Tim, if you have something for us?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Treasurer's Office does not have any updates, significant updates this week. We recently sent out our delinquent notices for those who missed the deadline for the second half tax payment, and so we're working with them, taking calls and making collections there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, next up, we have Approval and Minutes. May I have a motion on the Approval and Minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the Minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Three Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreements for Parks Waterways. Are there any questions or discussions?
Looks like an interesting event out there, Science with Style. Know what that's all about, sounds very interesting. And then two weddings, so I'm excited that the weddings are coming back, so I'll go ahead and move that we can approve the Three Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Should be noted, these events are for next year.
Next year.
22.
Oh, jeez.
522, 11622, and 31222.
You have time then to sign up for Science with Style.
Yeah, you can, that'd be nice, yeah. All right. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I might add that on Saturday, I had the privilege of floating the river.
Oh, cool. Which one? The Boise?
Boise River from our Barber Park.
Nice.
And I did run into Scott while I was out there and he said that was probably their busiest day for, because it was packed. We had to park like a mile down the road.
Did you bring your own air compressor?
Uh, no, we rented up, we rented a raft from the vendor. But I can tell you, I think just my observation is that's working really, really well, not having the air compressor going, because just as Scott had told us, people were all spread out enjoying the park, all spread out everywhere, all the grass, they had little air pumps and stuff, nobody was complaining, and they loved, they, so they were able to actually take advantage of the park better because of the, of the spread amount, spreading out. There's two or three places to put in and, and some people that didn't want to use a little pump actually pumped their, whatever they, where they were using, I even saw a couple unicorns on the river. Aired up. And they pumped them up in their car and packed them in, I mean, there's all kinds of ways, but I didn't, there was nobody complaining, they were all happy to be there, I thought it was great. I thought it was great. So, anyway, it was nice taking advantage of the river on a hot day, because it was really hot on Saturday. Saturday, I was there Saturday with my son. My son's visiting from China, he's a Foreign Service Officer in Shanghai, he and his family, and we were all on the river. Okay. Next up, we have a discussion regarding the agreements on today's agenda. Is there, is there, I'll entertain a motions, there's three agreements.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just like to get clarification on agreement, the first one, 14232, that's the one that you were talking about to help, right? And we're going back to the original source to be a consultant?
This is not the original source, our, well, Oracle has multiple people that have been consulting on that.
And this is?
This is one of them.
Okay.
We have received proposals from three, this one, by Mark, the rest.
Oh, good.
We're excited to basically focus on board and start clicking off some of the issues.
I'm glad you feel confident. It's helpful. I'll go ahead and make the motion if we're ready.
We're ready for the motion.
Yes, I'll move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion on the Weekly Indigent Items?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services Staff as listed on the Summary of Cases dated July 6th, 2021, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're back at procurement with the opening of bid number 21063.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we have bid 21063, Ada County PSB CCU Backup Generator Replacement Project 2021, opening for you this morning, and Evan has Bonfire queued up on our screen over here. We did receive two proposals for this, for this project, and if you're ready for Evan to open, we'll proceed.
Let's go.
All right, Evan.
Fire up the bonfire.
Mr. Chair.
But this morning.
Today.
Yeah, he's on fire.
Many puns. We have two bidders, what we're looking for this morning is the name of the bidder, base bid amount for copper conductors, alternate two is a bid amount for aluminum conductors, and then we have a $20,000 owner's contingency, and finally, an additive alternate number one for masonry enclosure for the generator itself. Okay, so we have the spreadsheet up here, and if you'd like, I'd go ahead and read it into the record.
Read them into the record, sir.
All righty. So our first bidder is Power Plus Incorporated, and they have a base bid with a, the copper conductors of $549,933. They have a alternate number two with the aluminum conductors for $496,933, and additive alternate number one for the masonry enclosure is $69,339. Just to note, there's also a $20,000 contingency added into these. Sure, Evan, if you could bring the contingency in. Okay, there we go. Perfect, thank you. bidder number two is Prime Electric Electrical LLC, and they have a base bid with copper conductors of $419,941. They have an alternate number two with the aluminum conductors, they did not bid. Okay, and additive alternate number one for masonry closure is $42,500. So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to need a little time to evaluate these bids, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the July 13th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I have a question for Bruce before we move on. Can you speak to the difference between copper and aluminum and?
Yes, need.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we prefer to go with copper, obviously, for a chronic copy of reasons. Aluminum is a fallback position if, if the budget absolutely demanded us to fall back to the aluminum. We had, just for example, on the 911 center was a cost savings issue, we went with aluminum mains and we have since replaced them because of all the problems aluminum causes. It's obviously not as good as copper or wouldn't be this much less, so the delta between aluminum and copper, I think we have an opportunity here to go with copper, so.
So it doesn't bother you that one of them didn't bid on the aluminum?
No, copper, as you know, has just skyrocketed. I think if we specified gold, we might have gotten a better price.
So, yeah, so we take that all into the, the RFP process? The extra price for copper.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Thanks, Bruce, so I'll go ahead and move to table the award of bid 21063, Ada County PSB CCU Backup Generator Replacement Project 2021 to July 13th, 2021.
Is there second of the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll be in recess. Good morning, today is July 6th, the time is 9:11. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. With us also is the distinguished Clerk of the Court and Auditor, Phil McGrane. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated June 30th, 2021 regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any discussion? I hear no discussion, we'll be in recess. We're fast.